It's 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, May 6, 2025. We are at the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting, Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. And for those out there, of you out there that are watching this on www.granberry.org/live, thank you very much. We have a very good meeting planned for tonight on the agendas, thanks to all of our staff that's out there today. So we're going to get started with the invocation. And Mr. Haf, if you will, we'll all rise for the invocation, then we'll do the pledges.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful, grateful for this city that you've blessed us with, grateful for these community leaders that you've blessed us with, grateful for this state and country that you've blessed us with. We are indeed fortunate. Father, we pray that your wisdom will be upon our city council members and mayor this evening as they make decisions that affect our community. Father, we pray for protecting, protection of our police officers as they go about the important task of protecting citizens and visitors alike. Father, we were grateful for our city workers who are there when water lines are broken or water backs up to help us out and make this a great community. Father, we pray your blessings upon all these great workers, and we pray, Father, that your will will be done. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Very good. Thank you. We will move to item number four, proclamation and presentation. Chief, if you would join me up here. Please, sir? Chief, I'm gonna go peacefully. You don't have to bring everybody. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. I've already asked the media that's here tonight, if you report on nothing else, which would be fine with me, please, report on the honoring of our police officers today. And then certainly, the children are going to be up here with Lemonade Day in a few minutes, too. Chief, we have an official proclamation here today. It's my honor to be just with you guys. Any ladies here today? No? It's you guys. Okay. Whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 15 as National Police Week, honoring the dedication and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the nation, and whereas it is vital for all citizens to understand the duties, responsibilities, and risks undertaken daily by our law enforcement officers, and whereas the men and women of the Granberry Police Department faithfully serve our community, protecting life, property, and the safety of all citizens. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 11, 17, 2025, as National Police Week, urging all citizens to solemnly remember those officers who gave their lives or suffered injury in the line of duty, and to honor the families they leave behind. It's given under my hand to the Seal of the City of Granberry on this sixth day of May 2025. Jim Jarrett. Chief, we have the official proclamation right here, and it is an honor and a pleasure.
I appreciate you.
Counsel, I know you're going to want to come down and shake every hand here, so might as well come on down. Thank you.
Chief. Thank you. Chief. 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 Can you say Granberry Radio? Y'all supposed to laugh. Y'all supposed to laugh when I said Granberry Radio.
Are the girls walking into that mother's girl there?
Where's our girl?
We're sorry.
I'll tell you, especially the police forces into, with the city of Granberry, the chamber and some of the activities that take place there, well, most of them, let's just say all, okay, are also very, very important to the city and very much appreciated.
We would love our board members to also come up here, please.
Are you sure about that?
I am. I'm a little guy. Y'all act like you likes each other.
Got everybody? Let me read the official proclamation. Whereas Lemonade Day is a nationwide program that teaches school-aged children entrepreneurship by encouraging them to run their own lemonade stands, and whereas the Granberry Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with Constellation, will follow too, Granberry Independent School District and local businesses and organization helps fifth-grade students gain real-world experience in business, financial education, and community involvement through this free program, and whereas participating students learn valuable life skills earning money and following the principles of spend a little, save a little, and share a little by donating a portion of their profits to local charities, and whereas the city of Granberry commends the sponsors, organizers, and the young entrepreneurs for their commitment to education and community service. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 17, 2025, as Lemonade Day in Granberry, and encourage all residents to support our young entrepreneurs by purchasing a cup of lemonade and investing in the future of our youth. And it's given under my hand, the Seal of the City of Granberry, on this sixth day of May 2025. It is an honor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to let the Constellation team join up here for the picture because they are our main squeeze sponsor, so can't happen without them.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it?
I'm sure. No, thank you all for having us here, and we're so excited to be the main squeeze sponsor for Lemonade Day in the Chamber of Commerce. Tim and I got to participate in charred tanks this morning, and it was just so great to see all the young kiddos out there presenting their projects and their lemonade stand. So definitely go out there and support them. They're working so hard, and I know they're going to do a great job.
Right.
I'm also going to bring our Granberry ISD.
Granberry ISD?
Yeah. Just to make sure we mention in the picture, so you can be with Constellation.
Okay.
We'll let Jordan handle it.
And Lisa. I want both of them.
Pretty good.
Put that by.
There you go.
You sit back.
There you go. Here. We just want to see everybody's face.
Thank you. Thanks, each other. Appreciate you. No, we appreciate you guys. Like I said, the police and their children, pages, pages, right, pages. And I found this official proclamation on this very nice stationery for $5.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to... Got my note tonight?
You bet. With all the rain, I want to acknowledge the folks that are out there working for the city, dealing with the rain, the street department making sure the drains are open and flowing. They get debris in them and can plug up, and next thing you know, you've got a whole neighborhood flooded. I know that the open lake pond system out at Abe's Landing has been somewhat of a challenge for everybody out there, and we appreciate all the work that's gone in to keep the water flowing to the lake and not getting dammed up somewhere. Also, I want to recognize a couple of promotions that we've had. I may have mentioned this in the past, but I'll go ahead and mention it again. Paul Gast was recently promoted as the Assistant Public Works Director, and in his vacancy of being Superintendent over Water Distribution and Wastewater Collection, we have appointed and promoted Dawson Bowling in that position. And then also, at the wastewater treatment plant, we appointed and promoted Chris Maples as the Assistant Superintendent of the Wastewater Treatment Collection System. So that takes care of a lot of stuff, and normal things you just expect on a daily basis. When you drive down the street, you expect the water to eventually drain, and you expect when you turn on the faucet for the water to flow, and when you flush the toilet, you expect it to go away. So those are, those are secret jobs that have to be filled, and we're very fortunate to have the quality of folks that we have that stepped up to provide the leadership in those new roles. So thank you all, and hats off to the promoted individuals.
Counsel, other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Overdare.
So we haven't had a city council meeting for three weeks because there's five Tuesdays in April, but on Wednesday, April 23rd, we celebrated Administrative Professionals Day. So I'd just like to recognize all our incredible administrative professionals. Your dedication, precision, and quiet strength are the foundation of our success. You're the ones who keep the schedules aligned, the communication flowing, the documents moving, and the details from falling through the cracks. Simply put, you're the grease that keeps the wheels of this enterprise moving forward. Often behind the scenes, you bring order to chaos, anticipate needs before they arise, and support everyone around you with grace and professionalism. Your impact may not always come with fanfare, but it is felt every single day. Thank you for your tireless work, your commitment to excellence, and for being the steady hands guiding this organization forward. We couldn't do it without you, nor would we want to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, I have just one more quick one. Quick?
And this one's a little embarrassing for me, but a citizen called me and said, was there anything that we could do about that intersection down there on Harbor Lakes and Plaza Court? Because it's a, it's a two-way stop, but traffic coming off of 377 come onto Holiday, Harbor Lakes, just comes right through there without having to stop. So I put in a request through Granberry.org, and they responded and said, yes, we'll go down there and look at that, and we'll put a sign up down there that says it's a cross, cross-traffic-doesn't-stop. And so then I was out doing another errand that day, and I drove by there, and there was already a sign there, and I didn't know that. So I sent another request, and I said, you can cancel that one because there's already a sign there, and just my errors, I apologize. I got an email back from them saying, listen, we've talked to Chester, David Carvalho told me that he's talked to Chester, and they decided that they could do something better than what that sign that was there already. So they made another sign. It's a huge sign now. It's white, it's got red stripes around the corners of it, it's got arrows pointing everywhere and telling everybody that the cross-traffic does not stop. So anybody that sees that sign and doesn't obey it, they're either drunk, or they're blind, in which case they shouldn't be driving. So thank you to Chester and David and their team, they've done a great job. Thank you so much. And you've probably made that intersection a lot safer, and probably prevented some accidents, and maybe even saved a life, so thank you.
Counsel? Well, I have just two things. One is, you look at the agenda item here, and this is about proclamation and presentation. And this came about, and I am delighted, but this came about because Councilwoman Trish Reiner at the time thought that this would be something that we should be doing, and she's the one that started this. Trish, I continue to thank you, and I continue to applaud what you started a few years back. It is the highlight of the meeting every time. And I was talking with my immediate predecessor here, Mr. Mayor Nan Hewlett, and we were trying to figure out just exactly how long City Manager Kaufman's been here.
Two years.
No, that was the work part, but actually being here, it's, it is right at 10 years. And there'll be formal ceremonies on that later, but Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Okay, we're going to move right along to five public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. And I have a public hearing. Mr. Hewlett, I will call you during the public hearing, and Mr. Haf, you are on Citizens' Comments, correct? So we have none. Okay. Very good. Thank you. So now I'm going to go to the consent agenda, number six. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. We have the consider approving city council minutes of last two weeks ago, or April 15th, three weeks ago. And 6.2 is consider approving the Instform Technologies LLC proposal, which is a $250,000 proposal, and then consider, that's the last one, and then consider adopting an ordinance to assure that we make the right financial entries on the operating budget to approve the $250,000. Right about that. Counsel, these are all in the budget, they've all been reviewed. See if they want to pull anything off or talk. Okay? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Mr. Overdare makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes a second. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Consent agenda is approved, 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move right to the deliberation agenda. This is a public hearing, will be held on this one, we will hear it from staff, and then I'll open it up for the public hearing. And this is to consider adopting ordinance number 2521, approving the request of Hunter Coleman to change the future land use map from retail office to industrial business park, and ordinance number 25-22 to change the zoning from interim holding to industrial zoning district. And the property is located at 5301 US Highway 377. So Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Kara Wowie, to go over both of these next two items with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our first slide is a location of the site, showing on this aerial outlined in teal is the subject property. It's currently unapproved with an office type of building right there at the corner of Highway 377 and M&amp;M Ranch Road. A portion of it is undeveloped, and the site is approximately five acres in area. Again, the zoning is proposed to change to industrial. The request requires a future land use map. The existing land use is identified as retail office, that's shown in the red, and the context here for the future land use map, the retail office is to the southeast and southwest. The darker color is commercial, which is a heavy commercial use, and there is no recommendation for industrial anywhere near this site. The request, again, is for industrial business purposes, which brings a higher volume of heavy manufacturing, industrial types of activities. And this slide shows the intent of the retail office. I'll just direct your attention to the photographs here, which are your inline retail shops and offices. The development could also consist of shopping centers, restaurants, grocery stores, and the like, and offices, medical offices, other types of offices included. So it's intended for those kinds of uses. And the proposed is industrial business park, which is characteristic of, as I stated, the heavy commercial, but also includes light commercial and industrial indoor manufacturing, assembly, and uses that also have outdoor characteristics. Okay, just a minute. I might need some help here, Carla. Thank you. The considerations for future land use map amendments includes whether the change would enhance the surrounding area. This site is located at an entry to the city there at M&amp;M Ranch Road, and the 377 is right where we begin to see the city, and is an important corner for uses other than industrial types of use. The existing land use map seems to serve that purpose with the retail office designation on this site. Infrastructure is already in place, and the site has water and onsite sewage, and of course, the streets exist. The change, is this a change that's better than that recommended by the future land use plan? In our analysis, the proposal would create more intense, not appropriate at the entrance of the city, perhaps appropriate in an area that's already designated for industrial purposes. And these go on through a series of questions about the property and whether the proposal would enhance the community's goals and objectives. These are goals and objectives contained in the comprehensive plan overall, and the goals include creating a more livable and economically vibrant community, which, again, goes back to the site being the entrance. We feel that the better use would not be industrial, it would be more commercial, commercial retail office. The impact, sorry? I think we're... The proposed impact on adjacent residential, there are areas that are trending towards development of residential in the area, and industrial is not necessarily appropriate around residential areas. Are the uses adjacent to proposed use similar in nature of appearance? Uses in the city are currently undeveloped land, not intended for industrial uses. Let me try this. There we go. Now, on to the zoning considerations. This is the site location with the green you see there is called Interim Holding. That's a district that is intended to stay in place until development of a property occurs. Uses like the existing building on the site are allowed in interim holding, or may be allowed if they came into the city as non-conformities. And the proposal for industrial zoning is what establishes the use for the property. So the first portion with the future land use plan is the idea or the intent of the city that then responds to a recommendation for the zoning. As we've been already through the comprehensive plan, future land use plan map, with a analysis which is going to lead to our recommendation of a denial, this is the presentation that focuses on the zoning. So when we're considering a zoning ordinance amendment, that is the zoning on the map, the zoning map, these are our criteria to consider. The zoning change would allow for future development on the property aligned with the area as it develops, and that's the intent. The industrial would not align with the surrounding area and intent of zoning. Whether the proposed change has, is in accord with existing proposed plans for providing public schools, streets, water supply, sanitary sewer, and other types of infrastructure, the site as exists does have infrastructure available, and the proposed zoning would not increase any school capacity. The amount of vacant land would be impacted with a slight increase to the overall supply of industrial land, the rate at which land is being developed in the same zoning classification. The properties in this area in the city aren't zoned industrial, so there's really a impact if this were to be changed. How are other areas designated for similar development would be impacted, the proposed use would increase the land area for industrial. Again, going back to our general plan analysis and site context, it's not an appropriate zoning district for this location. We did provide public notice to surrounding property owners as well as newspaper notice, and we've not received anything from any of those notifications. Thank you. Our staff recommendation is denial of the future land use plan change and denial of the zoning change. And again, please. And then our Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended denial of the future land use map change and the zoning change, and our next slide should be the voting options for the future land use map. And just a note, there is a reminder, if the future land use map change is denied, the zoning request should correspondently be so denied. And our next slide is the zoning voting options. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Overdare.
So in the comp plan application, it asks, are uses adjacent to the proposed use similar in nature in term of appearance, hours of operation, and other general aspects of compatibility? Now, and the applicant answered, all surrounding developed properties are industrial and compatible with the proposed use. I've looked at all the plants, I don't see any industrial around there. I drove out there and looked at it, and there are no industrial sites around that proposed, I mean, around that property. So I don't understand why he answered that all the surrounding properties are industrial and compatible, because they're not.
Do you agree?
I would focus on the areas in the city because this is the city's plan and the city's zoning.
The... Anybody else have another question now? I had one question. The property as identified, is that one property, or is there an adjacent property to it?
Yes, sir. So it is just that one property there on the hard corner of M&amp;M Ranch and 377. The colors kind of blend together in terms of identifying the site.
So everything would be changed to the red, basically?
If you're going for industrial, which is not a color on that map.
Oh, wow. Okay. But these two properties, see what I'm talking about?
This is a future land use map, and it shows it to want to be retail and office.
Yeah. Okay.
And so it's a different owner of this track.
Well, this track is different here.
Right. So they're just talking about that being an industrial zone, which is kind of spot zoning if you're looking at it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Questions up here? Mr. Corrigan?
So that, you said it, Chris, that was going to be my question. I remember we ran into this issue in the past, further into the city on spot zoning. Is that, and I don't remember the exact rules, so this may be a question for Jeremy, but that, I mean, we can't change it to that from what I've... but that, I mean, we can't change it to that from what I remember according to spot zoning.
It's heavy commercial, not industrial. There's a difference.
Go ahead.
You can, but in order to do that, you would have to amend the future land use plan, and taking that one single piece of property and putting it industrial with all of the other surrounding and the plan development that's there would, it would not be in compliance with the future land use plan.
Right. So, okay, so then remind me what the...
You could legally, yes.
Okay.
But you would be going outside of what you've already established as your future land use.
Right, okay. That'll work. Thank you.
Other? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And if we have someone that would want to speak on that, just come to the mic, turn it on, and give us your name and address. Very good, okay.
My name is Hunter Coleman. Address is the property there. I've worked, I'm representing the property owner. I'm employed by the property owner and sitting down here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Yes, yes, sir.
So I had somebody ask me, the intended purpose of what y'all are wanting to do on this tract of land was put in for show manufactured homes or five?
Yes, sir. It would be for sales and display of HUDco manufactured and modular homes. The reason we're choosing industrial is because that is the only zoning in the city zoning ordinance that allows for that. That's the only permitted use, or it's the only zoning that has that permitted use. And the reason we said that all developed property is industrial because if you, right above the green directly to our north, it's not in the city, so it's not subject to the city zoning, but it is developed as industrial property. It's contractors, garages, and there's a large manufacturing warehouse there to our north. Hospital down to the south, and then the remaining is undeveloped.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Coleman? Mr. Corrigan?
So if we were to make this change, that this building there, I mean, that's an actively used building. Is that going away? Does it stay? How do y'all plan on utilizing the property?
It'll continue to be, it is an office, which does align with the future land use right now. It's currently a professional office. There's a CPA firm as well as our home building company offices out of there as well. The reason we are trying to do the zoning change is because we submitted for a special use permit that was denied administratively, so this is our next avenue to be able to do that. Ideally, we would get a special use permit and not change the zoning, but this is our next option, so that's where we're at.
So what's the advantage of, or to you, of a special use permit?
It would be, our goal is to have the, you know, three or four HUDCO manufactured homes for sale display. That would be temporary in nature. Obviously, with the 377 expansion project, this property's not going to be model homes for manufactured homes forever. Ideally, that special use permit would give us a temporary allowance for what we're trying to do, and then obviously, as that property develops, that will go away.
What it sounds like, they're trying to utilize that land for a little while until a higher, better use comes available in which that would cause them to flip that property. Is that a good word for it?
Yes, sir, correct.
And make your money.
Yeah, right now, it's five acres. We got that, I believe it's about maybe 7,500 square feet office. So we have a lot of excess land that's, that we're not utilizing right now. We're looking to do that.
And special use permit is temporary, and I'm looking at Ms. Wowie. It's temporary, and...
So a special use permit, a specific use permit could be temporary if the council were to implement a condition through a public meeting for a specific use permit?
Have we had, have we had temporary and then said, okay, let's put it into, let's, you know, let's not approve the temporary for the next session? Have we had many of those or any?
So I'm not aware of any for this particular type of use where they would have the model home sales, perhaps many years ago, but I'm not familiar with any at this time.
And what kind of problems does this cause with our future land use and the comprehensive plan that we've been working on?
Sure. It really goes back to the goals and the objectives that the community has for development. It sets, it really sets the tone for that entryway into the community, an expectation of people who arrive into the community of the uses and character of the community, whether it is more of an industrial or a office setting. That's the key difference.
Mr. Woblie? Do you have a question? The, as I recall, the comprehensive plan was noted that we have a need for additional retail and office space up and down 377s at this point.
That's correct.
Other comments, questions?
No, sir. It just goes, ideally, I mean, maybe we can make a better case on a specific use permit and try to reapply and go that route. Like I said, that would be our ideal option. That way, you know, it stays zoned as interim holding until the 377 project, you know, gets down to that end of town and a better, higher and better use is identified in the future. We'd like to not put the industrial zoning on that property, but that's our only option as of today, which is why we're here.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one more question. I'm trying to understand this. This is only a temporary thing you want to have so that you can have it there until 377 is reconstructed, and then you don't think that that land would then be available to you to use as this, selling these modular homes?
It could be, but at that point, I think the property would be a lot more marketable as another use.
Okay, so it'd be more valuable then, but it's not as valuable now. You want to just, you want to hold on to that land until it becomes more valuable?
I believe that's the objective of the owner. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Others want to make a comment?
I would like to say, Hunter, thank you for doing a good job representing Jason and the company. I appreciate your time. I don't know how this vote's going to go, but I know you put a lot into it, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we do appreciate that. No one else raising their hand to speak? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period here. Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Obergeun.
So the S U P would not be something that we could do? And then, because they have to renew that every year, right?
If you condition it that way.
So, right, if you condition it that way.
And if at some point we decided, okay, we no longer want it to be industrial because 377 is...
And so every year, then they could apply again to request again, and then you would have to justify what, why it would not be appropriate in the future? Now, they could close it if it's, you know, the time is up.
Mayor. Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
I guess I'm a little confused because Hunter said that there were, his, he did go through the S U P. Is that correct, Hunter? You went through the S U P but was denied? Do you know the details on that one?
I did not see an application denied, and staff does not have that authority. That has to come through public meetings.
Do you remember that?
Maybe they, maybe...
Was that a verbal denial, Hunter? I guess, I'm a little confused on that part.
Maybe it was a, should we apply for it? And they probably said, well, based on our comprehensive plan, staff can't support it. So maybe that's what made them go this route. I don't know. Does that sound like something you would do?
Hunter, can you come back up and answer that question for me?
As he's coming up, yes, Chris. That sounds like a possibility.
Yeah, administratively, unless something's changed that I'm not aware of, we have to take it through the P and Z and the council for an S U P.
It was at a pre-development conference that we had that, and so it may have been that verbal. It was kind of at the time when the Open Gov, the online platform was kind of getting kicked off. So I can check our records, but if, I believe, yes, it was kind of a verbal denial at a pre-development conference with planning and zoning. Kind of said that we need to go this route or try to get the property rezoned.
Well, industrial zoning is a permanent thing for us. That's the issue I have with this. It's just, it's a permanent. But if y'all are looking for a temporary thing, then maybe the S U P is the way to go for a temporary, understanding that it's just temporary.
Right.
Because it has to be renewed. We can set the stipulations for it to be renewed every year, every two years, or whatever we decide to do. But, you know, there it goes again. He's investing a lot of money putting these manufactured homes on there, or whatever type of homes he puts on there. It's going to take a cost, and he may not be happy after a year, but it's, it's an alternative way. The other thing I was thinking is if you really wanted industrial, he could split that lot into two different lots and make the 377 facing part of it, you know, retail and office in the back end, a different zoning. That's another option. But at this point, I think, I couldn't approve this because of the permanent status of the zoning on it.
Right. That's what we kind of figured too. Right now, it's interim holding. We'd like to keep it that way and do the S U P if possible. So if that's something that I can get back with P and Z staff on this week and kind of re-approach that and see what we could do there, that would be ideal on our end as well.
Yeah. As you heard, it takes, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny that, and then comes up to us, and we have the final say on that one.
Correct.
All right.
A good example of an S U P is used car lots. They require an S U P. And some of those, and just like Mike Brown Ford and Schott and Kirk, all those things out there now are operating under an S U P that were issued that don't have an end date. Unless they fail to comply with the codes, then they could lose their status to be able to be there. So I don't think the council wants that kind of arrangement with y'all where it would be a permanent. So it probably would be a temporary special use permit. It's what's, what sounded like they would entertain, so anyway, that'd be...
Seems to fit both parties' goals.
Glimmer of hope.
Mr. Coleman, appreciate you coming up, and we effectively reopened the public hearing. So is there anyone else that would want to speak? Any more questions for Mr. Coleman? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing again on this. My understanding is we are, this is what we're voting on, approving the future land use map change. We're not voting on S U P. We're not voting on anything else. We're just voting to approve or not approve, deny the future land use map change, okay?
I'm gonna vote on this first. Then you're gonna vote on the zoning second.
Yeah, voting on this one first.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making the motion to deny the future land use map change.
As defined in ordinance number 2521, correct?
I second that.
Mr. Woblie seconded that. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. We've denied the future land use per ordinance 2521, six and oh. Do I hear a motion on ordinance number 2522 to change the zoning from interim holding to industrial zoning district? Or to not change the, to deny the holding, or deny the change in zoning from interim holding to industrial zoning?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make the motion to deny the zoning change as presented.
Here's a second.
Second.
Mr. Robert, I have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. So the, we have denied 2522 to change the zoning from interim holding to industrial zoning, six and oh. Okay? Very good. Thank you again, Mr. Coleman. Appreciate you coming. All right, we will move to 7.2. It's also a public hearing, which we will hear from staff, and then I'll call, open the public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 2523, approving the request of Anthony CPAC to change the zoning from interim holding to heavy commercial zoning district. The property is located at 301 Kings Plaza. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. As y'all are aware, this has been going through the process for about six months, and so here we are on the final stretch of this little, little 20-foot piece of land that is being added to their land. And in order to make that transaction, we voted to donate that little strip of land. Y'all did to vote to do that, and also required them to plat it all into one, and part of that plat requires this zoning. So this is the last stretch on that donation of that little unused strip of land. So turn it over to Ms. Wowie for the details. But those are the real points of the matter, so important points of the community needs.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is our location map. This site is on the corner of King and Plaza Drive there, on the south and east corner outlined in teal. As Mr. Kaufman stated, this property would be joined with the property adjacent abutting there to the south. The proposal is for a zone change from interim holding to heavy commercial. This is our zoning map. The red shows heavy commercial. The zoning would be compatible with that. Interim holding is a holding district until development is ready or conditions are ripe for property, and such is the case. Here we go. I need help, Carla. Thank you. So the request is consistent with the future land use plan for commercial, heavy commercial zoning. And there we go. These are considerations for zone changes, and all of the considerations are met in a positive fashion for this request. Some use is compatible with the surrounding area. Infrastructure is in place. Commercial does not add demand for schools. It would add to the overall supply of heavy commercial zoning in the area, although it's already consistent with the future land use plan. And properties in the area have been established, heavy commercial, and there aren't too many properties in this area that would be coming in for zoning. Many of the properties are developed. We did send mail notices to property owners in the area and also published in the newspaper. We did not have any responses from that notification. Staff is recommending approval of the request, and our Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval with a six oh vote for the zone change. These are your voting options, and I would be happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Questions, counsel? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and I have Mr. Hewlett signed up to speak. If you'd like to come forward, please, sir.
Counsel, mayor, counsel, city manager, Councilor Sorrellasalto, he's, wake up. Well, I'm here representing people helping people. I serve on the board along with Anthony CPAC, who's the president. He's with us also tonight. But we're here to answer any questions. But I'd also like to just commend the team of Jennifer Russell and all those folks that helped us through this whole process because we're not, we're not in the business of building or doing road construction or anything like that, you know? We're just here to serve the community for the things that we do out there with the people helping people. So they did a great job. They were going through the transition of putting everything online, but we did old school also, you know, where we just called them on the phone, and they took our calls, and they took care of us. So they did a great job. So, city manager, I hope that you could relay that message back to them and let them know what a great job they did. And also, counsel, I'd invite everybody to come out there on any given day, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we serve food. And if you're having a bad day, come on out there, and I promise you, at the end of the day, you'll feel good about it because we're always looking for volunteers to help pass out the food and stuff out there. So invite anybody to come out there and help us out there. So like I said, I'm here to answer any questions on this rezoning, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Questions? No questions? Mr. Hewlett, I think you know I used to own the properties up north of there.
I heard that.
I think that I could have made a lot of good money had those improvements been made prior to my selling it many years ago. Those is nice. I drove by there just the other day, not for any reason of this. I drove by there just the other day, not for any reason of this, but I was driving by there and I'm saying, man, that's nice. They've done a very nice job. Appreciate it. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Comments, questions? All right.
You're invited too, to come out. Anybody can come out and serve food.
Okay, I think I better close this at this point in time. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming up. Counsel, other questions for staff or anyone? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the zoning change number twenty-five dash twenty-three?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Oberdear, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That will pass, six and oh. That is approved. Thank you all. Now we'll move to number seven point three. City manager, talk about awarding bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five dash oh six for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five street improvement project and awarding it to Solid Rock, or Rock Solid Inc. in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. And this is the twenty-four, twenty-five street improvement project.
Thank you, mayor. This project is our, project that we budgeted a million dollars towards for street rehabilitation and, and maintenance for the, for the year. And at this time, we've got Director of Public Works Chester Nolan and our city engineer, Chris Hay, here. I will defer to them to whoever comes to the mic, so they've probably got a game plan between the two of them. Appreciate you coming tonight, Chris.
Yep, no problem. Good evening, counsel. Chris Hay with EHT. We opened proposals for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five street improvements project on April thirtieth. We received four proposals. The proposal scoring sheet and proposal tabulation is attached to your packet. But the scoring committee met to rank the proposals based on price and, and a few other factors that was listed in the request for proposals. Out of that scoring process, the committee chose Rock Solid Incorporated as the highest scoring proposal. We reviewed their proposal and it meets all the needs, all the requirements in the request for proposals. So with that being said, we are recommending award of the project, the construction contract to Rock Solid Incorporated, which includes alternate proposal price for concrete for Gifford Drive in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. So I'm happy to answer any questions there may be related to that or whatever you may
Counsel, questions? Engineer? I know that in the past few months, we've had one bid or no bids. We have four this time and it looked to be very, very, very complete. Had some questions on it, but what's changed?
I don't recall any of the projects we've bid have one or no bids recently. They may have.
Last year.
Last year, we did have one bid from Jay Mills Contracting, who's done a good job for the city in the past. We are finding that a few more contractors are looking for work, which is picking back up availability of contractor, contractors, which is always good for projects. So we were happy to see that. Outside of that, not much has changed from the way we have done things from last year. It's a similar project, similar package that we, we put out for proposals.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And Chris, have you ever worked or seen Rock Solid's work?
I have not personally, but they did perform the work for the Cardinal Woods Development. So city staff has experience with them. They made up the majority of the, of the proposal scoring committee, so they were comfortable moving forward with them. In addition to some of their references, they showed that they had the qualifications to do the work.
I mean, if it wasn't for Jay Mills's price, I guess they would've won the bid on that one because they scored high in certain areas.
Yeah, they, they scored high in the past experience with the, the city and their qualifications. That's the way the proposal process works is it's not just price, but the difference in price was the factor, determining factor in this one ultimately.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Chris, if, if counsel wants to choose something other than the recommended from the committee, is that possible or, I mean legally, is that a process we need to ask attorney about?
This is competitive, this is competitive sealed proposals.
Yeah. It's not low bid, it's best value for the city.
Was it best value?
Yes.
Twenty-two?
Yeah. In accordance with twenty-two sixty-nine.
Then they could look at each one of those and award it.
Rescore it on their own?
Yeah.
Yeah. So staff's put together a recommendation for you, so just like anything else, it sounds like y'all are able to rescore this as you see fit and award it as you see fit. But staff is recommending Rock Solid Inc.
I mean, Chris, have you heard any, anything from Rock Solid that would make, make you concerned about their work? I mean, we've had some other contractors that we've definitely had, if we heard their names, I'm, I'm sure you would say they did not perform or they had to come back several times because of, of the base or something like that.
I have not. And like I say, they did do Cardinal Woods paving for that subdivision. And I did ask our chief building official and he, he said he shouldn't have any problems with them.
Okay.
So, I mean, nobody's gonna just wholeheartedly endorse somebody, but they're gonna go by the history that if there was a problem, they fixed it at the, at the Cardinal Woods, you know? But they didn't leave it where it was hanging out, holding the project up or anything like that, so.
Right.
You know, Jay Mills has been good to us and Peachtree in the past has done some things for us and PaveCon, I believe, has done some things for us as well. So Rock Solid's the new kid on the block for us and it's good to see new bidders, so competition's good. Obviously, the price difference is worth noting.
Yes.
Yeah. Additional questions? No?
Thank you all.
No? Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to award bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five oh six for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five street improvement project to Rock Solid Inc. in the amount of nine fifty-one, eight twenty-five and fifty-nine cents for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five street improvements project and authorize city manager to execute the contracts?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Allem makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We will be working with Rock Solid. It's, it's a good, the work here, the layout of the work and the work that needs to be done and all of the work that staff has done, I thought was exceptional. Appreciate it.
And, and I appreciate the questions that y'all asked because, you know, it's not just a rubber stamp up here. We're, y'all are really looking at what's best for the city and, and going that way. So I appreciate the questioning and, and looking into it, so thank you.
Okay, we'll go to seven point four, which is consider awarding bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five oh seven for the Yule Street sewer line and improvements to Blair's B&amp;B Back, sewer line improvements, awarding it to Blair's B&amp;B Backhoe Service Inc. not to exceed one hundred and fifty-five thousand and authorize city manager to execute the contracts and consider adopting ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-five amending the operating budget for the enterprise capital project fund for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Kaufman?
So I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works. This is a project he's been intimately involved with and thank goodness we're getting to the finish line on it as well.
Yeah, the finish line. This has been a struggle to kinda get there, but the Yule Street project is, we have an eight-inch sewer line in that street at the present time and it's marginal as to the, this particular project. They have six townhomes that they're in the process of constructing. They've already cut water taps for it, if you've noticed, on the street. The eight-inch sewer line needs to be upsized to a twelve-inch. That's to accommodate both what the six townhomes would contribute to the sewer system and then also the, there is a project upstream that will greatly oversize or overwhelm the eight-inch water or sewer line. And we're recommending, since we only had one bid. It's a very small project. There's only four hundred and forty-one feet of twelve-inch line. The larger contractors were not particularly interested in it, so that's the reason with the, with the one contractor. Blair's Backhoe Service, we've checked them out. They, they do good work. They haven't worked here previously. But staff would recommend that we move forward with it for the tune of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and get the twelve-inch line in place so that they can move forward with building their townhomes.
Okay.
And I might add that this is, this is a good use of the impact fee dollars that we collect for the taps that people put in. We, we bank those impact fees to do improvements like this where we're having to increase pipe size to accommodate future growth. And so it's a good spot and that's included in your budget amendment that we would amend the budget to, from the impact fee funds to fund this project.
Other questions?
Mayor.
Mr. Corgan?
Is the, once this project starts, is the entire street gonna be closed for the duration of the project or just?
No, sir. It will, it will be in segments that, there may be periodic times that all of the street might be closed, but it should move fairly rapidly and it will only affect portions of the street at any one time, I think.
Okay. Just thinking about the entrance and egress to the parking lot there.
Yes, sir. And the post office, we will have to bypass their line for a while when we're installing the fourteen-inch, so we'll have to go around and, and keep them in sewer service. So I think we've got a good plan all the way around to get this done.
Excellent. Thank you.
I asked Mr. Kaufman earlier, why we didn't just tie this on to the institute form technologies and use that and respond to that?
So we need to, we need to go more than two inches.
The institute form process will allow you to do pipe bursting and increase your pipe capacity by two inches. So in this situation, we're going from eight inches, I thought it was six inches, but he said eight inches, to twelve inches. And so we can't do a pipe bursting project for that.
Yeah, I was just looking at, you know, if we don't have to block the streets or anything like that, then.
Yeah, we don't have to repair the streets either, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right. No other questions? Okay. So do I hear a motion to award bid number twenty-four dash twenty-five oh seven for the Yule Street sewer line improvements to Blair's B&amp;B Backhoe Service Inc. not to exceed one hundred and fifty-five thousand and authorize the city manager to execute the contracts and adopt ordinance number twenty-five twenty-four, amending the operating budget for the enterprise capital project fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion? Your second?
Second.
Mr. Corgan, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass, six and oh. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay, moving seven point five. Consider nominating a candidate to the Hood Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to, District Board of Directors to fill a vacancy with the term expiring December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five and adopt resolution number twenty-five dash oh eight to submit the name of said candidate to the chief appraiser of the Hood Central Appraisal District. Mr. Kaufman or staff?
Sure.
All right.
I'll, I'll run with it a little bit. We do have a resume provided by Richard Haves in your packet. If you don't have it, just hit the refresh button. We added it on Monday. And there's a notice from the chief appraiser in there that notified us of the vacancy. There's a, provided, they provided us a qualifications of director. And how this works will, is we nominate by resolution who the council would like to nominate and then the, the chief appraiser and the board of directors of the HCAD will look at who's been nominated and choose from those, we think, of, of an individual to serve the unexpired term of the previous director that's vacated the seat. Happy to answer any questions if you may have, but at this time, that's the only point of interest that we've had is from Mr. Haves.
Okay, so we have one nominee. Any discussions on Mr. Haves? I did read through his, his qualifications and I don't see a box he didn't check, but any other comments on this? Okay. You still interested, Mr. Haves?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I hear a motion to nominate Mr. Richard Haves to the Hood Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to fill a vacancy with the term expiring December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five and adopt resolution number twenty? Go ahead. Get what?
Two, two separate ones first.
Oh, okay. Got you. Okay. Do I hear a motion to nominate Mr. Richard Haves to the Hood Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to fill a vacancy with the term expiring December twenty, thirty-one, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Allem, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Six and oh, approved. And do I hear a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five oh eight to submit the name of Mr. Richard Haves to the chief appraiser of the Hood Central Appraisal District?
So moved.
Mr. Wiley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Oberdear, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that too will pass, six and oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Haves. Appreciate you stepping up for that. And we'll see what the appraisal district does at that point. That is the deliberation agenda and so now I'm gonna move to number eight. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. And did I have one here? Thought I had one. I guess I do not. Attorney, or counsel, do you have it? Yes. Mr. Haves, did you have anything that you wanted to say about the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department?
Good evening, mayor. Counsel, Mr. City Manager. My name is Richard Haves, livid four twenty-eight Riverbank Lane here in Granberry. And I'm speaking tonight as a member of the board of the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department. In that role, I'm on a internet discussion group of volunteer fire departments across the country and I read their, their struggles and I read their successes. And, and one key differentiator between a struggling department and a successful department is the support of their local community and their local community leaders. We're fortunate here that we have you as our city consul who supports our volunteer fire department. Yes, sometimes it's expensive. Those trucks cost a lot of money. The turnout gear costs a lot of money. The SCBA's cost a lot of money, but they keep our firefighters safe and by extension, our citizens, safe. It makes a huge difference. It gets us that, that ISO two rating. It allows us to do the fire academy and train new firefighters and it allows our officers to be well-known throughout the state of Texas, where I've been to the, the state convention last summer with them and I watched chiefs from across the state come up to our chiefs and ask for advice, ask how to make their department better, using Granberry as a model. So then that's thanks to your leadership. You made that happen and I appreciate it and the department appreciates it. Also want to share with you some exciting news. It's announced last week that one of our firefighters has been named the District Firefighter of the Year for SFFMA District sixteen, which covers eight counties in north central Texas. That's Lieutenant David Lowry, who is well-known to the fire department. I don't know if the council knows, knows Mr. Lowry. He's one of our great firefighters, been on the department for four years and he is now District Firefighter of the Year. Thank you for your time and your support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haves, for what you do there. Yeah, very well. Okay, well, that's going to move us to executive session. We do have information shared in the executive session. So I am gonna now declare that the Granberry City Council has convened an open session that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five five one point oh seven one- Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property and section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are now in executive session. Thank you. Uh, 8:50 PM on, uh, what is this, May 6th?
Yes, sir.
2025? And I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. Is there any action to take here tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir? Okay. There being no further action, no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.